Good afternoon.
Let's call our workshop meeting to order for April tenth, two thousand and seventeen. You will, let's stand and say the pledge. Commissioner Pickens, will you do the pledge? Commissioner Goddard, will you do a prayer?
Prayer first, yes sir.
Yeah.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here. Help us as we go through these deliberations that we make good decisions, Lord. And we just ask that you be with our family and friends as they make travels out of town for spring break, Lord. We just thank you so much for Jesus, and in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, our first order of business is, and I think Ms. Allen, you're gonna walk us through this, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you wanna sit over there, or sit at the big, stand at the big podium, which one's?
Sir, if I sit?
It's alright.
I'm not feeling very well, so I'd rather have a seat.
Fine with us, we're fine.
If you don't mind, I mean, I will get up if it's okay.
No, I want you to be comfortable, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Allen, you have the floor.
Okay, well, at the May, March twenty eighth Putnam County Board Meeting, we discussed having a workshop today for two topics, one, to consider the appointment of an interim Putnam County Administrator, and also discuss the course of actions and recruitment and hiring efforts for a full-time county administrator. So to make it an easier task to go through, I broke it down into two different tasks. Task one, consider the interim Putnam County Administrator appointment. At the last meeting, you asked me what we normally did, and at the time, I wasn't prepared. Our current policy states general employees, when they're assigned to an interim role, are usually compensated with a ten percent salary adjustment. However, this position is a contractual appointment, so what I needed to do was go back and look to see what we did historically, which was a number of years ago. Back in December of two thousand, the board awarded a pay adjustment of twenty-five hundred dollars a month to the person that took over for several months. That equated to a thirty-five percent pay increase, and I think things were a little better back then financially, I'm not sure, I wasn't here then. The period of time was just over six months or so, but that was the period on which they did the recruitment and selection and hired the administrator at that time. So I have three options that you could consider, there may be another one that you have thought of, or a combination, but some of the options I'm presenting today would be option one. You could appoint an internal employee to take on the additional responsibilities with the pay adjustment, and this could be done with an immediate appointment, if the staff member you select is willing to do so. A second option would be to appoint an external consultant to be in the interim county administrator position. And there are many places where you could recruit from, but we would follow our hiring practices, and the salary would have to be determined for that period of time. I would like you to be mindful, though, that process may take three to six weeks, so it might delay the appointment of someone. And then option three, the Florida Association of County Managers, also known as FACM, they have what's called members in transition, and that would be someone who's looking for administrative or management role that's currently not appointed. They used to call them range riders, that program, years and years ago, I don't know if you're all familiar with it, but sometimes you can enter a short consultant contract, and we do know Attorney Manning has, was contacted by someone, which I have that information, that may be willing to come out here. They don't live here, though, and it would be a commitment of time while you go through the recruitment. So that's another option that you have, but that also would probably take about three to six weeks, following interviews, salary negotiations, et cetera, to get through that. So my staff recommendation, I took everything you have into consideration, as well as past practice. I think probably to have an immediate appointment would benefit the county, and to consider full-time staff that would be willing to take on the additional duties. But due to budgetary constraints, and I look to see what others would do, since our policy is quiet on a contracted employee, it would seem reasonable to make a pay adjustment from a thousand to a range of fifteen hundred a month, which funds are available in the county administrator's salary line. I know it's not in keeping with what was done in two thousand, but we are in different financial times, so I kept that in mind. And that is kind of what's in keeping with an appointment now that people are doing it, if they appoint someone internally. So that's my recommendation, and that's the three options that I came up with for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Commissioners, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Goddard? No? Commissioner Pickens? Alright, so I guess we're ready to move on. Are we gonna do it all at one time, or do you wanna take it task one and task two? The microphone.
Now, we might wanna do one at a time.
Okay.
I do have a few questions of concern, and this is just me talking out loud. Option two is a concern of mine, of putting somebody in, as well as option three. It's more money, and someone who doesn't know our current situation, and would have to get up to speed. And honestly, I feel like we're all doing really, really good right now, so I kinda like option one. My only concern there is having someone in place that might want to apply for that job. And what I've heard since I've been around here and been hearing is sometimes people get into interim positions, and other people don't want to apply because they feel like, well, they're gonna get it anyway, and there's no sense in me doing that. And I would rather us knowing that whoever's going to be that interim is not interested in appointing, in becoming the county administrator at that point, only 'cause I wanna really open it up and see how many people would like to look at Putnam County and maybe possibly come, or maybe they're already here, and we don't know that yet, so. I see the microphone just got pulled over.
Well, you and I, I have shared with you, and possibly one or two other commissioners, I will not be applying.
Okay. Well, you shared that with me, and I did not want to say that until you said that.
Yeah, I.
So I appreciate that, so.
I think I could hold the fort for you, but I think my best role is your deputy and your budget officer.
You know, Ms. Papel, I appreciate that. Honestly, we're in trying times right now, and no doubt that I have confidence in you and the budget. I've worked very close with you here lately, and even since you've been here. And I'm glad, I'm glad about that. So commissioners, we have a task in front of us, and that's task one to deal with, so is there any other discussions? If not?
Do we have to, do we have to appoint somebody today?
Commissioner, you'll have to put that.
Do we have to appoint somebody today?
We don't have to do anything, no.
No, a word of caution, Ms. Papel is, by way of her job description, appointed as the acting county administration administrator in the person's absence. However, to be fair, if we were going to appoint an interim during the hiring process, you know, there are many more duties and responsibilities attached. And if we are gonna make an appointment, we could wait till tomorrow or another further agenda. But we do like it to start at the beginning of a pay week, if we could do that, not mid-pay week. It's just an HR thing and payroll administration.
So if I'm understanding, it's, if we move with the appointment, her pay will go ahead and start to compensate her.
You would have to set the pay.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a recommendation here, but that's, that's up to us.
Correct. They gave you a little range, but you can go over, above, whatever.
And you're here all weekend, working too, by the way.
Can I ask?
Yes, please.
The appointment has no time limit?
Well, if you were gonna appoint an interim, it would be through the process of whatever, our next topic, the recruitment and hiring, but I would say four to six months should certainly be adequate. Whenever you're hiring for a top position like this, it does take a little longer, and you may have outside-of-the-state applicants, and there's always relocation periods, but that seems to be the general rule of thumb, four to six months. So you'd be asking, if it is Ms. Papel, a four-to-six-month commitment.
The motion itself would be, would be to appoint whatever individual you choose, at whatever rate you choose, and that person would serve at-will, at your pleasure of the board, until such time as a permanent county administrator is hired.
Or a replacement interim, if you weren't happy.
Yes, it's another option.
Okay, say, our employees currently do not work at-will, they work for cause, correct? All of our employees that we have in the county, so you're saying that in this position, as interim, it would be an at-will position?
Yeah, 'cause it is, it is a, normally a contract position, so I can certainly be justified in doing that. And again, it's just for the interim position, it would not affect that individual's other job duties if, for some reason, you know, you decided you wanted to go a different direction, certainly that person would step down from the interim role, but retain their previous position.
Which would be back under for cause at that point.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to get to, thank you. Okay, commissioners? Commissioner Pickens, you look like you wanna say something?
Yeah, I do. If we were to go ahead and appoint somebody today, what's the commissioner's opinions on, you know, following up with, with fact? I guess it would be, or the FACMA, on maybe bringing somebody in temporary, you know, to get us through the budget process, and get us through that during the hiring period for a permanent candidate? Somebody with experience, not that I'm saying Ms. Papel doesn't, or whoever we would, you know, would bring, would nominate.
Commissioners?
Go ahead.
I'm, I believe that Stacy would be able to help us through this, myself. I don't know about bringing in anyone else.
I do have former experience with a budget in similar shape to ours for a city, and bringing it through the crisis.
Okay, I was just thinking that maybe with your experience, but having a, a, maybe a retired county administrator to, you know, to help through that process might be beneficial. I may be the only one who feels that way.
Well, I believe that's something that could be discussed later, or voted on later. I think right now, if I'm following it right, we're basically looking at the appointment and the salary. And if that's, if, if, do you have anything to add?
Well, I do, you know, vet it on out, and then I'll talk. But the, it's hard to make a decision on the interim without discussing, at least in a broad way, what we're, our expectations are for the permanent. That's very important to me. How long do we wanna take for a permanent? Where do you wanna draw, from a national pool, a statewide pool? You know, those are important questions, and cost above all else at this time. And I think, I don't need to share with you three, that it's, it's huge. We have a limited budget, and I think we just need to keep that in mind as we kinda come up with the best solution for us. Somebody said it a minute ago, what fits us, who knows us?
Right, that's.
Who knows best for us? We do.
We do.
At this point. And I think Stacy Papel's job, probably for the next four to five months, is the most important in this whole county, and I mean that. I'm very worried about balancing the budget. And I'm very worried, I'm gonna say it, about putting more duties on you as a result of that.
I would, if you appoint me, I would be handing some of my day-to-day tasks down to someone else.
Typically, you don't have an assistant, that's what bothers me, would it be new to them? I'm asking fair questions here.
It would actually be Ms. Allen. Ms. Allen handled some of Mike Anderson's day-to-day duties when he worked part-time, so she would easily be able to pick up those day-to-day things.
And your duties go where, then, Ms. Allen? Your day-to-day duties?
Well, I have a staff of four to share. Right now, as you know, we have the bid out, but I don't see that it's gonna be a problem.
Okay, well, I brought those things out for a reason. I gave them a lot of thought this weekend. We gotta tiptoe through the next five, six months.
Yeah.
And we gotta be very careful, think of them as eggshells.
Well, that was a concern of mine, too, and you're right. But we do, we have people here that know us, know our position, and we don't have to get somebody up to speed. And I feel like we can go ahead, and, and, I will say, let's go ahead and say it publicly, if it gets to be too much, and if the board decides to go in that manner, raise a white flag and holler help, and.
Absolutely.
If that, if that board decides to go in that way, but, you know, it's.
Mr. Chairman, we could, let's talk about what the expectations are of finding a permanent county manager at this point. I mean, let's call on Ms. Allen to give us some of the expenses associated with a national search, statewide search, or just lend your experience to us, if you would, please.
Okay, well, that's a good segue into task two. Determine the hiring and recruitment process for a county administrator. And on that task, I have four different options, which, you know, one would be the traditional in-house, which would range anywhere without including my staff's cost, about four thousand dollars for a national search and ads. But that's where I think we could also benefit with our partnership with FACM, the Florida Association of Counties. They do have a program that I offered as an option here. It would help and assist with the recruitment and hiring process. And option one is without, or I'm sorry, option two would be with, out a committee? In-house committee, if you wanted to appoint a board or a committee. Or option three is with a committee, if you wanted to appoint it. But their cost is around five thousand dollars for that entire service, as well as some costs for advertisements. Of course, they wouldn't charge to advertise within their own group, but, and then the fourth option would be to do an RFP, to hire a group to do that. And I have a recent survey in here that was done in April of two thousand and sixteen, where it ranged between fifteen and twenty-four thousand dollars for RFP for that. But as far as getting the word out on the position in a national search, it would range probably about four thousand dollars. Internet is a great thing in getting the word out.
And if we, if we use a firm, what would a firm?
The firm, the rate, the most recent RFP I have on here was about fourteen thousand to twenty-four thousand five hundred, is what the bids came in.
Yeah, I keep hearing twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, this was the one I just was able to get a copy of, and it is provided as your attachment B in this packet. Attachment A is the county administrator recruitment services from FACAM, the Florida Association of County Managers. And they will walk through, even helping you determine what kind of county administrator you wanted. They would meet with the commission and have public meetings, and the second page is the table of contents and the overview of the recruitment process, a work plan and approach, the timeline, the engagement letter, how they would go about the search and help, and do that. They would work hand-in-hand with HR, though, 'cause we would still take in the applications and provide them to them. But that's all done electronically now, so that's, you know, not a problem, we do that for all of our.
Ms. Allen, what'd they say about the timeline? What was it?
Well, the timeline for which portion, it's about a four-to-six-month process.
Either way, you go?
Yeah, because.
Who says we can't shorten that?
You could, but that's a general rule. You wanna have the job out there for about thirty to forty-five days, give people time to apply. And then, once they come in, we vet all the, the applications, see that they meet the criterion. But before we even get to that point, you all need to decide if your job description is what you're searching for, and to give either me, or FACAM, or do an RFP for someone to seek what experience, education, and background you're seeking.
I agree.
They have emailed us, and they're willing to hit the ground running with us.
Yes, very much so. They're ready to.
Commissioners, I like the blend of our staff and the Florida Association of Managers, the manager, Florida Managers Caucus, whatever you wanna call it. I just think that we get people more familiar with, of course, state statute, and many of these people have rural county experience within our state, and know what the expectations are there. I just think it's a wiser move for us, I really do.
Commissioner LaBelle, you said a blend of that with, with who, with HR and?
Putnam County HR and the Florida County Managers, Managers Association.
What do you feel about a committee from our citizens to be kind of the vetting source first?
I think each one of us should appoint a person to represent us. That's what's been done in the past, I looked that up this weekend, and I favor that. I think that it's best that way, especially if we pick, you know, somebody from the community with experience.
Right, professional.
With, yeah, somebody that's been in an executive position and familiar with this, and know the, the stuff we're looking for, the credentials that an applicant might have, this sort of thing. The city did it just most recently in their search for city manager, and we certainly, I think, should follow. Most people seem to go this way, don't they, Ms. Allen?
That is correct, especially on the group of fiscally constrained counties or cities. It is most cost-effective, and you get a, a great pool of people dealing just with public sector recruitment.
Well, Commissioner LaBelle, I went all the way to the League of Cities in Oregon, and they found a lot of the same information that.
Yes.
There's a lot out there on the internet, and it's really kinda modeling the same thing you provided to us today. So I'm, I'm well pleased with some of that, so.
Well, that's why I broke it into two tasks. Task one, to appoint an interim, and then two, to move on to the recruitment and hiring of the replacement administrator. And this, I do have to say, even with or without a committee, FACAM would be an outstanding partnership for the county. One, the cost, but the wealth of education background and the skill that they would utilize. And they're, they're used to working with citizen committees or not, HR staff or not. I mean, they'll do whatever we want them to do, basically, and they're ready to hit the ground running, as Ms. Papel stated.
Yeah, I think that the understanding of North Florida is most important in this. You know, somebody from Oregon might be shell-shocked when they get here.
Well, no, that wasn't, I was just using their stuff.
Even South, you know, I for South, it's a different Florida.
Different, yeah.
We, 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 I like the County Managers Association because they, they know what to expect in North Florida.
Right.
From Pensacola to Jacksonville, it's different than South Florida, you know, so.
And then what I heard you say, Ms. Allen, is we're gonna have to set the criteria of, and we had that in resolution currently, under the county manager's position.
Ordinance ninety dash twenty-seven, that's correct. But there are some things that doesn't address. We do have a current job description, which is the last attachment in your pocket, packet, as well as a hiring range. We don't have a salary range for the position, but I did some research on the, the salaries, and through FACAM, again, every other year, they do a survey, and your attachments, attachment C and attachment D. Attachment C is the Florida Association of Counties by county, along with their population, and it has little highlighted orange counties on there, and it tells you what their current administrator's salary is. For fiscally constrained, they're highlighted in orange, but, um, let's see, the mean salary was one thirty-six, the median was one hundred twenty-four thousand, minimum fifty-two-five. So what I did was, on attachment D, I took all the fiscally constrained counties of population of thirty-two thousand or more, and I added those, and I came up with a starting hiring range around a hundred and four thousand six hundred, and based on education and experience.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Since I've been here, I have always thought about this, that one day this might happen. And fellow board members, hear me out for just a moment. I would like to see a salary, no, somewhere around what the sheriff makes, as our top law enforcement officer. But I also like to see it based on population. Now, just hear me out for a minute, because our salaries are based on population. We get paid like seventy-four cents a person in Putnam County, and that can go up or go down based on the census. I always felt like if you wanna raise, let's grow the county. If you, you know, don't, then we're stuck right here where we're at. But I like it based on the fact that it gives somebody an idea of where we're, where we're headed to. So I think starting salary should be right around what the sheriff makes. And I think it, as a caveat, we should be looking at trying to base it on per-population person. I know that might be off the wall, but I, I, I think that has merit, 'cause we get paid that way, and all your constitutional officers get paid that way.
Yes, that is something I did take into consideration, and that's why I had a hiring range of one oh four to one thirty-five, based on the market of fiscally constrained counties in Florida, as well as the population. And the sheriff is just under a hundred and fourteen, somewhere around there, a hundred thirteen. So that's kinda like in the middle of this range, but I left the range, I, I kept it actual as my recommendation because you might have someone with not as much education, or, you know, your criteria is spelled out, you might wanna increase it, then you could increase that salary. But that's, that's why I came up with that range, and how I developed it.
Well, I often look at Columbia County, and we look really close to Columbia, with the exception, we don't have two interstate counties, but, you know, if.
And their salary's at one twenty, right, currently?
So somewhere in that, I, I like what you put together, so that was just my thought.
Thank you.
I can support that to a degree, but not based off population. I think it should be, I like the idea of the concept, but I think it should be performance-based, much like we do our Economic Development Executive. If he scores the big enchilada out there and brings in the industry with a thousand jobs, he gets a nice bonus. Why not do that for the county manager?
I, I like that.
You know, even if they were working in tandem, I mean, we might come up with a hybrid that's never been used before in rural Florida, that might be successful. I think you're on to something, we're on to something.
Yeah.
But basing it on population, Commissioner Harvey, really, that's no incentive.
Yeah, you're right.
I like incentives.
I do, too.
You know, and I've never heard of it being done, but that doesn't mean that we, we need something out of the box, we keep saying that. That's out of the box.
The way I understand it, we will, we're gonna look at what we're putting out there.
Correct. And that's just the suggested range, so applicants would know it could be from here to here. You don't wanna give it the whole pay grade, because they always wanna go to the top end.
Right.
But we also need to be mindful of what we can afford in our budget, so.
Yeah, and that's.
I came out of, I came out of sales, I fully get the performance-based.
I do, but that's, you know, I mean, in the county managers realm, I don't think they've, you know, they're gonna say, well, that's not in our scope, but maybe we need to add that, I don't know.
I could make a suggestion, perhaps in the. I, I could make a suggestion, perhaps in the contract, you could establish some goals. Um, and working with FACAM, maybe they could help you develop some-
Yeah.
Goals and objectives to, to meet and attain some of those ideas. Do you have in mind?
I'd like to have some kind of wording that suggested a strong relationship with our economic development professional. That tied them in there so that these two, you know, because the county managers, they do have their hands full in day-to-day operations as this sort of thing, but, um, I think they could lend a little help. Brian, what do you think? Have you ever seen that?
Yeah.
Need to come to the microphone. We are being-
I mean, are we, are we coming from outer space here, or is this something that might?
Actually, no. When I was in Lincoln, Illinois, in Logan County, I worked directly with, uh, the county administrator. Or actually with the board chair, because they had no county administrator. And I performed a lot of those functions as county administrator and economic development, so, no.
Well, he in turn can help you normally with staff and some of the things that you, you don't have-
Exactly.
In your current digs over at the chamber, you're kind of a one-man show.
Right. I mean, I can't make decisions for the county and the county administrators that first bounce off when we have projects and those kind of things that come along, um, to funnel to you, so.
And you know, Commissioner Label, I like, I really like this, um, because I've been intrigued with the concierge service about holding some of developers' hand, a business owner's hand. Walking them through the permitting process. If you have an incentive like that, they're going to make this happen. Now, they're not going to bend the rules. I'm just saying they're going to, they're going to walk through the process-
Sure.
And make sure it's done.
And it also keeps Brian, our economic development professionals edged by the secrecy that most of these, uh, outfits are, are looked, they, you can't put their business on the street through public records requests and this sort of thing.
Right.
It's hard for us to understand that, but I totally get it in the private sector. You know, it's, uh, it can thwart a good plan or a-
Well, and I think connecting those a little bit closer together gives, uh, the county a little better look at what we face on day-to-day. I mean, I know we have those discussions about, you know, why we can't market this piece of property or that piece of property, or why we're not getting looks from these types of things. And I think that would help solve some, or bring some more solutions to, more quickly, to help us move forward a little bit better.
And you know, this board, this board is going out looking at new partners, not just old partners, but new partners.
Right.
With surrounding counties. And, uh, I mean, we're really taking a proactive step about doing that to see-
Yes.
Who can we be friends with and who wants to be friends with us?
Yeah.
And what do we share in common?
Well, exactly.
So with, with the county manager working in that detail, that would be a wonderful event.
It would be. It would work very well.
Mr. Manning?
We have some statutory limitations on what's being proposed as far as a bonus for a county manager based upon performance. Um, statutorily, any bonus would have to be offered, uh, for all employees. It would, uh, have to, uh, be based on a policy ordinance or a rule that describes the performance standards and evaluation process. Um, again, it would have to apply to all employees and it can only be paid out of non-tax revenues and non-state appropriated funds.
Well, aren't you the bearer of bad news?
So, I'm like, that's over with, doesn't it?
Where did you come from?
That's a major bubble version.
Well, I, I think we can get around that.
Yeah.
Well, same.
We have an attorney that can-
Well, Commissioner Label's idea, I think, is a great idea. I think there's, we should look at other ways to, to do that.
Well, his words don't, the council's words don't scare me off either. If we are successful at that level, don't all employees get a raise? Called a COLA. Does that qualify?
It has to be more specific. No, uh-uh, it would not.
All right, but we could create something.
You could. Potentially.
Scare me off. That kind of builds a team, doesn't it?
It certainly can.
Yeah.
Exciting.
Any further questions?
I think not right now. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, so where are we at now? We've still got task one to complete.
Yeah, we, and we, we got a little discussion on task two, which was important to me. Thank you for doing it.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
But when, if I could-
Sure, please.
Question, um, when you said, um, as far as to form a committee, would you think just four is enough? Um, I'm kind of thinking maybe, maybe two per commissioner.
With, with just four of us, that's not a bad idea. I don't know if two, um-
And then maybe even the commission.
Looking at eight.
Coming up with one person to make the ninth, to chair it, just to throw that out.
And I, I, I'm, I'm going to step in here. I, I, that might be a lot, but that might be all right. But I do want to keep, uh, District Three in case the governor gets fast on appointing. I'd like for that new appointee to be able to have a say in that process, so-
Right.
Um, you know, we could go ahead, the four of us, and pick two, that would be eight. Or we could pick one apiece. Uh, that would be four. Whatever y'all want to do is fine with me.
I like smaller committees. Bigger ones are problematic. I've just experienced it. I think five person committee would be sufficient. And how we pick the fifth, I'm not sure, but.
Could we, you know, I thought about that over the weekend. Could we, and this is just me thinking out loud, could we have maybe our clerk fill in until the appointee has an opportunity to, to appoint? Or would that be kind of, what would that look like?
Well, you're, you're taking somebody from government.
Okay, you're right. Yeah, you're right.
If it's going to be, uh, business, private business citizens with corporate experience at the top level, it should be that.
I hear you. Good thought.
You could certainly do, um, one appointment each for all of the five commissioners, understanding that for the time being, that there's only going to be four that are acting until somebody a, actually is appointed, um, to replace Mr. Stillwell.
I do have a question concerning that, because last week in our ethics class, um, we learned that these committees could be under the sunshine law. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
All right. So they would need your help to navigate through that, along with HR's help, too.
Well, if you go with the FACAM, that is one of their recruitment steps. They would, um, make sure that the committee understands their roles as well as FACAM's roles and responsibilities. And maybe they could even help formulate your committee if you had, you know, some concern about that.
Mr. Chairman, are you looking for that committee to be made up today?
It's on the table, so let's talk, yeah.
I, I, I've prepared for it.
Okay.
And I have, you know, I'm there.
All right, Mr. Label, if you like.
Well, I had, um, President of St. John's River College call me and I think Joe Pickens and-
Well, I think before we start, do we want to go ahead and appoint, we ought to appoint a committee first.
Yeah.
Five, five-member committee?
I think that if FAC, uh, shows up with their caucus of county managers with some stuff, I'd like to have our committee be able to meet with them right off the bat.
So your motion is to have a committee of five people, one from every commissioner? It doesn't matter if they live in that district or they have to live-
No, that wouldn't matter. We, you know, I think the criteria are coming up with people with experience. And, um, it was easy. Mr. Pickens called me and would like to chair it. I mean, who better than a past state legislature and president of college? And I think that, you know, he's my pick anyway. I just wanted to make sure I got that in.
Well, I think we would need, um, we would need an action, um, a motion, um, to establish the committee, uh, and-
For the appointing.
Right, uh, with one appointment each for each of the commissioners to the committee. And then with direction to the, uh, FACM, um, to help establish the guidelines, the rules, and what the committee is, is going to be doing, um, what their role is going to be.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion concerning the committee.
Move approval as stated by council. That was a mouthful.
Do we have a proper second?
I'll second that.
You like that one, uh, Mr. Goddard?
All in favor of appointing a committee of five people, appointed from every district, no matter where they live in Putnam County, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign? Okay, now let's start with our appointment. Mr. Label, you have an appointment.
Mr. Pickens, President of St. John's River College.
Okay, Mr. Goddard, do you have an appointment? Are you ready to do that? If not, we can, we could do it tomorrow, too. We could keep it going.
Let's do it tomorrow, because I would like to-
That'll be fine.
I, I have, but I haven't looked him eye to eye and make sure this is what-
Okay.
Oh, that's important. That's important. Like I said, I'm probably early. I'm really-
No, you're fine.
Anxious about this.
No, you're, let's get it going. You're fine.
Like, Mr. Pickens called me and I went, whew, that's perfect.
Was that your pick, Mr. Pickens, or?
Yeah, that wasn't going to work.
Did he steal your thunder?
He is always my pick, but I, I didn't think I could nominate him.
Beat you to that one, didn't I?
I have somebody in mind, um, but I have not spoken with them. I will speak to them tonight. And, uh, I'll make my recommendation tomorrow.
Okay. Um, I do have someone in mind. I'd like to go ahead and point John Brownie to it, so, um, uh, I would like to make that my appointee. So right now, we currently have, um, a committee of five and we have two appointees. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the recommendations.
Move approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Label.
I'll second that.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, so tomorrow, gentlemen, if you will, if you're ready tomorrow, we can put that on as a, an item that we need to talk about.
It can be part of your appointments.
Part of our appointments? All right, we'll do it then.
And do you want to continue to move, um, I, I guess the section, the second, um, part of, of, of this item two, I've, um, is deciding on, on whether or not you want to use FACM. It sounds like that's the direction you're-
I move approval to use F, uh, FACM.
I'll second that one.
Okay, we have a proper motion on the floor by Commissioner Label, proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Uh, any discussion? I forgot that the last time. I'm going to get this right. Guys, I went out, look.
HR will still be involved with the process also, correct?
You know, that's what I had written down, too, and I wanted to-
Yes, I think this, the, the motion would be, is consistent with option three. Yeah, in what was presented today.
And that was my recommendation.
That was yours, okay.
Retaining FACAM, establishing a committee, and then having HR's involvement, the three features.
And the cost of FACAM?
It's about five thousand dollars and then some of the advertisement costs that we would probably still do in HR with their assistance.
And there'll be some staff time involved. Who would be the staff person to this? Would you do that, Ms. Allen, or would you assign Lori or would you-
It would be Lori and I. Um, most applications are submitted electronically now. Sometimes they come in by mail, but, um, I will be certainly hands-on as well.
Okay. All right, we have a discussion. We're in discussion right now. Would you walk me through what that would look like when an application comes in? Let's just hypothetically say there's twenty applications on the table.
Okay, well, how that would work, um, all applications, resumes, cover letters, all that can be submitted electronically. And we could either allow those on the committee to look at them electronically, or we can provide the hard copies to them. We do both ways, depending on some of the managers' styles, if they like the, the hard copy. Um, part of FACAM's role would be, once they're all printed out and distributed, they would vet the applications, make sure they completed the application, that they meet the criteria and rank them. And then at that point, they would work with the committee and go forward. And if you look at, um, the packet I gave you of attachment aid, the table of contents kinds of gives you a rundown of how they would establish and meet with the committee part of the search. But it's, um, a very pain-free process. Sometimes people hand-deliver applications, but in this age of technology, most of them are submitted electronically now.
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Papel, real quick.
Generally, what I've seen is they're ranked by FACAM, then they're shortlisted by the committee. And then you guys perhaps will have a shortlist come and visit and, and actually meet with you.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I would like to see, is, you know, when, when they get done, and I don't know if I want to know one, two, three, four, and five. I just want to know they're in the top five. And then we have an opportunity to sit down, each one of us with all five, and go through a questionnaire with your help.
Right.
And, um, you know, because you'd walk us through, or Lori could be there with us at times. And then we could get kind of a broad-based support at that point.
Part of FACAM's role would be to find out exactly the process and how you would like to see it go.
Okay.
And if you wanted your top five, your top three, your top ten, I mean, they'll, they'll take that information and, and assist you with it, but that is the, the most, um-
That's the norm?
Plain, normal way is, you know, getting that shortlist together. Um, sometimes people drop out in the process, so.
What I did learn, too, is not to, even though it's your number one person, not to put all your eggs in one basket, in my reading over the weekend, because negotiations could fail.
That's correct.
And, you know, you don't want them to, someone to think, well, I'm number three. Darn. I mean, that's, that's not what I'm going for, um.
And part of the lag in the process is, um, putting together the, the meetings to interview the, the perspective. And sometimes the, it doesn't work out to their, their liking or your liking and you move on to other applicants. So that's why it could extend a little bit longer. Uh, maybe they thought they could move here, but then they realized, you know, well, Aunt Sue needs me, so I'm going to stay home.
It's even more reason for that strong committee, you know. I was very excited when Joe called me over the weekend, because he's the president of our chamber and is on the front line of economic development, working with Brian and who better, you know, with his past experience coupled. You just picked someone potentially that has that same past experience and I think it, it gets the best quality candidate up to the top.
I agree.
I'm, I'm saying that for the benefit of you two, whoever you, but that's what we're trying to do here. Is find, you know, a committee of people that just have that solid experience and know what our needs are. That's what's so important.
I agree.
Because, uh, they're going to select the person that's going to be our, uh, next general.
That's right. Ms. Papel, real quick.
Well, and another important thing to consider when you have a shortlist is not just how they interact with the five of you.
Right.
Potential five, but how they interact with staff, senior staff and subordinate staff. I mean-
Good point.
Yes, sir, Mr. Manning?
Um, I would, you still haven't voted on, on that one item, right? Um, as far as the specifics that, that you're discussing, um, s- some more of the specifics regarding the, the actual process that you want to go through and how you want, you know, if you want them ranked or, or not. And possibly, um, the salary range and, and going through and fine-tuning the job description. Um, maybe I would suggest those things could be handled, um, at a workshop with the FACM, um, here to assist with those items.
I like that. Okay, we do have a, um, a proper motion by Commissioner Label to accept the two appointees and we have a second by Commissioner Goddard.
I just want to ask one question. Where, we make a nomination tomorrow, I understand that. Where are we with the fifth? Do we have to wait? Are we waiting until?
Wait till that appointee gets here.
Okay, so how's it, what would the committee is? If that takes ninety days.
There'll be four people on the committee.
But the four people would be able to look, right?
Yeah, but it might go faster. You never know how fast it goes.
I'm comfortable with it. I mean, like I said, I've, we've got a couple of people from the business end of it that, and one with the educational end of it, knowing our needs and ties to the legislature. I mean, um, I'm feeling confident.
I don't think it'll get bogged down.
I don't either, not with that.
I think it'll move pretty quick, so. I understand your concerns, I really do. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing now, we do have a proper motion and a proper second to, uh, the point, the two appointments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Okay. Um, we just still need to get back right now on task two. I think we pretty much handled task two. With the exception of, we'll do a workshop to set the criteria with FACM and move in that direction. So task one is still out there that we need to deal with today. And that is to appoint a interim manager, administrator. Um, so board, what is your pleasure on this?
I'd like to make the motion to put Ms. Papel as our interim county administrator.
Okay, is that based on staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. So you're-
Also need to decide what you're going to pay me.
Well, on that, if that needs to be done now, then I would say the $1,500.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Goddard to do option one, which is staff recommendation for an additional $1,500 per month as an interim county commissioner. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Alright, the motion dies for lack of a second. Commissioners?
I would like to offer a motion, and I don't want Ann, or Ms. Allen, excuse me, or Ms. Papel to be upset with me, but I gave this a lot of thought this weekend, and I'm very worried about your job with the health insurance and all, while I've stated all this previously. And I like the fact that Mr. Manning was in the trenches more so, from what I could tell, with day-to-day business of the county until Mr. Leary retired. And with that being said, I would like to offer Mr. Manning, if he's willing to do it, in that role, and with the hopes that we make this process fast, what I really want to achieve here is get us a manager onboard as soon as possible where we can get to work. You know, we've got serious business ahead of us on multiple fronts, so with that, I'll offer your motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a proper motion for, what about salary? We do need to talk about that.
Yeah, let's offer that in a separate motion, if you don't mind, because I wasn't ready for that.
Okay, alright. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Labble to appoint Stacy Manning as the interim county commissioner. Do we have a second for that motion?
I know, I'd like to discuss if we could.
We have to have a second in order to discuss. If we don't, the motion will die, and we'll go back to square one.
Do we have to vote on it?
We do have to vote on it, but we can withdraw it during discussion.
No time.
I've been reading. Okay, so seeing no second, that would die for lack of a second, that motion.
I wanted to hear Stacy's thoughts on this.
I think we just, it died for lack of a second. So, if the commissioner wants to bring it back up?
I'd like to bring it back up for discussion. I'd like to hear Stacy's.
Which Stacy?
Which one?
Let's go off last name.
I'd like to hear Mr. Manning's.
The item needs to be second in order to have discussion.
Then I'll second it.
Well, we just removed it. So, Commissioner Labble, would you, would you like to redo your motion?
I'll reoffer my motion, as stated exactly as before.
Thank you, sir. We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Thank you. Commissioner Goddard seconded the motion. Now, discussion. Mr. Goddard, you have a-
Mr. Goddard, you had a request?
I would like to hear Mr. Manning's thoughts on this.
Well, first of all, I want to say that I think Ms. Papel is certainly qualified to do that. If you're asking for, what are, what would I like to be doing? Is that the question? I also have no desire to be the county administrator on a long-term basis. I'm a county attorney. I'm an attorney by trade. I've been doing it for 24 years, and that's the career that I will continue to pursue until I retire. So, if that's one of the issues that you're concerned about, I certainly would not be applying for that position. I wouldn't object to being the interim county administrator to help the county get through this process. I would hope that it would be a relatively quick, quick process in finding a permanent administrator. I think that's what this county needs desperately. So, I'd want that to move along as quickly as possible. But to that extent, I would do it, although I will say I would expect the same percentage as the previous county attorney received when he was appointed as the interim county administrator previously.
What was that percentage, Mr. Manning?
Thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five percent. Of whose salary?
Of his salary at the time.
Hang on, I'll tell you how much that is. $1,275?
$1,275 is Mr. Manning's current salary.
Mr. Manning, is that open for discussion?
Certainly your meeting, so.
That would be $3,718.75 a month.
Per month?
Per month.
I think, you know, I'm just gonna say it, that it gives me a little heartburn. I'm a type Wad, every one of you know it.
Me, too.
The, I would like to see that reduced a little bit, you know, I'm just one person. But I think that the times economically were better. What year was that?
2000.
December 2000, 17 years ago.
They weren't much better.
And at the time, it was a $2,500 a month bump in pay. It was just 35% of that in that person's salary at that time. And my recommendation wasn't a percentage. It was just a straight $1,000 to $1,500 per month for a total of $6,000 to $9,000 for the six-month period anticipated due to budget.
When you say due to budget, there is, the county administrator's salary still is in the budget, correct?
Correct. Well, there were payouts and so forth.
It's not completely all still sitting there.
Yes, correct, unfortunately.
And we're gonna use some of that money to go look for a new county administrator. So, there's not a whole lot left in that line item when that time comes.
And there are other budget pressures.
Mr. Chairman, what's your feeling, and other commissioners on this at this time?
I think that's steep. I think that's steep for Putnam County, and I appreciate Mr. Manning's willingness to do it, but I think that number is not in our budget for that. That's my opinion.
Mr. Goddard?
Well, you know, I'm just about as cheap as you are. No, I don't see it in our budget, and that's our main concern, is our budget.
For Pickens?
Mr. Pickens.
It is a lot of money, yes. And then, again, do we have to make this decision today?
I think this decision's very important for our staff going forward, even in tomorrow's meeting, personally. I think so. Mr. Manning, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Please go right ahead.
What, you know, feeling, I mean, hearing us, what, give us something to barter with. I mean, would you be willing to even do the job for a lesser amount of money?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what was happening back in 201999 that would, is different today that would justify a lesser amount. I haven't heard it. So, I have no reason to really think that my services would be less of a value to this county than my predecessor's services.
And I don't want to offend you, but I'm not looking at it that way at all. I don't know how they arrived at that amount, but I'm just looking at our picture right now in time. And I would, I mean, do you feel that the extra duty would give you or Ms. Papel a lot more time in the office beyond-
Absolutely, absolutely. And I don't have anybody to give my work to and then give them a raise to do my other work, so.
Alright, commissioners, we have a motion and a second. We had discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we have-
I didn't, I didn't vote. Just hang on a sec.
Roll call vote, Mr. Manning.
You can do a roll call, but I just-
No.
District two.
Alright, I'll vote for it. I said my piece.
That was a yes?
That was a yes.
Yes, district three, not present. District four?
No.
District five?
No.
Okay. Okay, we're back to square one. Commissioner Pickens, you asked a question. Do we have to do this today? And I've heard you a couple times saying that. I do think it's important that we do pick a person to move forward, but we're not building the atomic bomb here, but we do need to show unity. And I, too, have been studying all weekend, as I'm sure each one of us have, about where do we go from here? So, Mr. Pickens, I'll give you the floor for a few moments on that.
I just don't know that we need, if we don't have to make the decision today on that, I think that I would like to do some more research and reading on this matter. I understand that we need to have somebody in place, but I don't know if it's imperative that we do it today. If it isn't, somebody explain to me why. Now, I know we need to move on in this process. I also like the possibility, and I guess we could do that later if we did name somebody, if it is in the budget, to look at a county administrator to get us, you know, through the process of the budget and also through the hiring process for that permanent county administrator. I'd like to research that a little bit, too. Or y'all's opinion on that. I don't know that you, you know, you didn't have much comment on it before when I mentioned it, but-
I'm a little worried about the salary.
Me, too. I think we're gonna bust that line item.
Obviously, if I'm arguing with Mr. Manning over $3,500, I don't want to spend $135. Yeah.
It's a cost that would just-
Much more.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're gonna be fine. I mean, I see unity coming. I see people working hard. I know that, Ms. Papel, you're here Saturday and Sunday, putting-
Not every Saturday.
No, I know that, and, but I know that, I feel the same way Commissioner Labble does, is you've got a very important job right now, probably the most important job through the-
And the county administrator would have been spending considerable time working with me on exactly what I'm doing. So, that's where the brunt of his time, his or her time, would have been anyway-
Right.
For the next several months.
And bringing someone in, and this is just my opinion, and it could be just me, unless they know Putnam County, trying to bring them up to speed on what's going on. There's a learning curve, and then it's a budget matter. It's a lot of different things for me that just don't appeal to me at this point. So, but again, Commissioner Pickens, thank you, and commissioners, we're gonna end this session in just a few moments, so is there any other? Do we want to go back and revisit task one, or do we want to put this off until a future date? And I think-
Let me ask one question, kind of-
Yes, sir, Mr. Labble.
Out of left field, but what do the two top staffers share the position? Is that even possible? You just said something that kind of registered with me that you do spend a lot of time putting this thing together, and I've seen it in the past, but I don't know if that's something you want to consider or not. I just do it out there.
I would look to HR and our county attorney to answer that question.
Their mic can only-
No, I like the- I mean, that's a tough one. You'd really have to-
It probably wouldn't.
It would be awkward.
Very difficult. You'd have to differentiate the specific-
Say no more. You both agree that it needs to be one person.
Well, commissioners, currently, too, we have an acting county administrator, our deputy. So, nothing's gonna change, and we're just gonna be able to move forward from here until we decide, unless you want to decide today.
And I am willing within the recommended amount of money.
That was gonna be my question, is she, is she willing to work in that recommendation?
One of the things that impressed me, Ms. Papel and Ms. Allen, they already have looked at this. This is what we can do to make this work. So, that's why I was, I think we're ready, but obviously-
Well, the chair will entertain a motion if you're ready.
Then I'll make the motion again. I'd still think it's a great idea, again.
State your motion, please.
I state my motion that Ms. Papel take over as interim Putnam County Administrator.
For the amount?
For 1,500, for an extra $1,500 per month.
Okay. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard for option one, staff recommendation.
That would be with the same caveat that it's at the pleasure of this board and until a new permanent was established.
Yeah.
At the pleasure and at will, only on this job title, for $1,500 a month. Do we have a second for that? Do we have a second?
I'll second it, so we can discuss it.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard, a second by Commissioner Pickens. Now, discussion.
If I could?
Yes, Commissioner Labble.
Somebody said a minute ago, though, you're gonna turn around and pay more money to Ms. Allen. So, is it really $1,500, or are we right back to the $3,500 that we were discussing earlier with Stacy?
I'm willing to assume the extra duties with no extra cost to the county.
So, it's just a $1,500 monthly cost until we find a new-
For Ms. Papel, yeah. I'm not expecting any additional. I will help out. I do that now.
You do that now.
Well, I heard that, and I had to ask, you know, if there was any difference.
And also, your staff will be able to, they wouldn't incur any extra expenses?
My staff does that now as well. And we still have the executive assistant that shares both Stacy's offices.
Tabitha's job shares between the two of us.
Right. Alright, commissioners, any other discussion? We have a proper motion to appoint Ms. Papel as the interim county administrator at will, $1,500 more a month. We have a proper second by Commissioner Pickens.
Did you want to make a comment? Press?
I'm sorry.
If I'm not out of line?
Well, we're still in discussion, so come on up, please, sir. I'm sorry I didn't see your hand fly. Thank you, Mr. Pickens.
I realize I've only been here a year, but I do have engineering public works running fairly smoothly right now, and I do have a fairly larger staff. And I had mentioned before, I would like to be, or entertain to be, the interim administrator to get us through this situation. I've dealt with Stacy. I understand budgeting. I deal with the day-to-day minutia that we deal with every day. And all I'm saying is I would love the opportunity to help Putnam County through this period if it's within anybody's purview.
Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. We appreciate it. Alright.
Wow. Monkey wrench.
Yeah, just wait till the 11th hour.
Oh, boy.
Commissioners, we do have a proper motion and a second. We're gonna call for a vote. Roll call vote, Tony.
No.
District two?
No.
District three, absent. District four?
Yes.
District five?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay.
At this time. I know I made the motion, but that, there's a-
You wrote? Oh, boy.
I think right now, this board needs some more time.
Yes, we do.
And I think that, I think that we would be better served with our acting county administrator right now. And let's revisit this at a future workshop where we can have time to think about it and go from there. How was my commissioner feel about that?
Right, but you don't have a choice.
We don't have a choice, right.
Press, press gave us another option.
Alright, is there any other business that needs to come before this workshop today? Alright, seeing none, the meeting will stand adjourned. Thank you.